Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the March Meeting of Leeds City Council Executive Board. I'll just start by reminding everybody that this meeting is webcast and welcome anybody who is watching online. I'll turn first to the formal items at the top of the agenda. So, item one, are any appeals against refusal of inspection of documents, please?
Thanks, Chair. To confirm, no appeals have been received for today's meeting.
Thank you. There's no exempt item, information which is item two, there's no late items, which is item three. So I shall turn to the board and see if there's any declarations of interest. I don't see anybody. I will turn to the board again for item five and check that everybody is happy that the minutes of the February meeting are a correct record. Take it everybody is happy with that. So we will move on to the first paper on the agenda, which is item six, please, councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Leader. And the financial item today is the usual iteration of the financial health monitoring we take at Executive Board at every meeting, having dealt with the budget that we accepted at Executive Board last month and indeed in full council following that. So today's report covers the position as at month 10, we are reporting an overspend of 6.5 million pounds, a projected overspend of 6.5 million pounds. The report goes into detail around the directorate overspends and pressures within year so far and projected at the end of year. And it also goes into detail around the budget savings achieved, those that have been achieved and those that we're still waiting for some outcomes around. I don't think there's much more to comment on it, and I'll wait for questions, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cooper. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Couple of points, if I may. There's a bit of deja vu with this report, looking backwards. And I note that both children and families and adults and health have got worsening overspends at this point. The concern looking forward is that while you've recently passed a budget that predicates an awful lot of savings to be made in those directorates next year, that suggests that the direction of travel is we're still not going to meet them and be on target. So is anyone in a position to comment or give me a reassurance that children, families and adults and health will be on track to deliver the savings needed to balance the budget, not only this year but next year?
Thank you. Who'd like to go first? Julie, please.
Thank you, councillor Lewis. I think what we have seen through the delivery board, and we've discussed it here at Executive Board, is a number of work streams really aimed at being able to deliver on our savings proposals, but equally being able to deliver for children and families. And what we have seen is progress against a number of those work streams. I've met this morning with directors across Yorkshire and Humber Side, and I've just come from a meeting with directors from the core cities. Our children looked after rate is currently around 89. Our stat neighbours is 91.8, and core cities is 95.5. We are at our lowest numbers of children looked after since August 2023, and it's actually gone down again today. We are at 1,492 children looked after. That shows that the strategy is working. In terms of our numbers of children, subject to a child protection plan, in May 2024, we had 718 children, and that was a rate of 41.2%. In January of this year, we were at 648, which was a rate of 37.2%. The national average is 41.6%. That is evidence that our family help and our early intervention and prevention is working. We're reducing the need for children to have statutory intervention, and we're de-escalating need through our family help and our child protection services. We've reported here previously, you know, that we now have seven homes which have been bought and refurbished and staffed, seven new small group living homes. We've been able to reunify, bring nine children back to Leeds as a consequence of that, you know, with a saving of about 80,000 pounds a week, you know. So again, we're beginning to see that our strategy is delivering. We have a further group living home which has been purchased, we have one under offer, and we've got another further property identified. That will mean that we have increased our provision by 10. I don't think there's any other local authority in the country who is managing to, you know, increase their internal provision at the rate in which we are in Leeds in order to bring children back to Leeds, because we want them to be in Leeds, to get the outcomes that we need for them, but also the financial outcomes. With also just in terms of the transport, you know, we are seeing the costs of transport have risen again with inflation. However, our numbers of children, you know, using transport has reduced. We're seeing more children who are being trained in terms of independent trainer travel. We watched a video earlier on this week at my extended leadership team, children themselves telling us what a difference it had made for them to be able to travel independently across the city. Parents, carers telling us how anxious they had been about actually the benefits that they can now see for their children. We have the delivery board, we have the member oversight meeting, we have my management meeting, you know, every Thursday. There's close oversight, robust financial action plans under every work stream. But we do have to recognise as well that we're working in a broken system when we have nationally a select committee that has been established to look at the financial arrangements around send, because we know nationally it is not sustainable. It's not sustainable for local authorities, you know, and that is being actioned. And the same with children's social care, in particular, you know, residential provision for children. So, you know, there is evidence that we are making, you know, good progress. We're making progress how we can. We will be picking that progress up. But I have to say, we're still working in a very, very difficult context, because first and foremost, we need to ensure that children are getting the protection, the help that they need.
Thank you, Julie. See, councillor Lam wants to come back in again, but to see if somebody wants to... Somebody wants to come... Okay, let's do that then, then we'll come on to adults. Thank you.
Thank you. It's just, there's lots of positive things described there, but there's then a disconnect that the financial position has got worse in a month to the tune of 3 million pounds. So how do those two things marry if we are delivering on the action plans, making good progress, and yet the financial position has got worse? And that's the concern I was highlighting at the outset, that we need to know and have the confidence that we're on track to deliver the savings needed next year. It is not in the best interests of children to keep having to find more and more money. If we can invest the money in preventative services and keeping them away from care and in their families, that is surely a better approach. And if we can't control the finances, it isn't in the best interests of children and families to do that. So I'd just really like to understand the disconnect between all of that action, but the financial position getting worse.
Julie, please.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Lewis. Thank you, councillor Lam. So it takes time. You know, when I've talked about the fact that we're going, as an example, from, you know, 10 children's homes to, you know, additional 10 children's homes, that takes time. We're now at the point where those children's homes are coming online. You know, we have to, there's formal things that we have to do in terms of registration with Ofsted, as an example. So we will see more provision being available in the city, as an example, for our Leeds children, which will enable us to, you know, return those children from costly external placements where the outcomes are not good, you know, into Leeds. That takes time. I suppose what I'm saying is, you know, we're at a point now, close to more children being able to come back, because those homes will be up and running, as an example. You know, another example is foster carer recruitment, you know. So we've seen many more foster carers come forward in Leeds. That's probably taken about 12 months of activity in terms of us reviewing our recruitment strategies, you know, our inductions, if you like. But we have, you know, significantly more foster carers now in the pipeline than we have had for many, many months, you know, if not, if not years. But it takes time. And in terms of the demand, you know, the demand is still there. You know, we still have the impact of the pandemic, we still have a growth in our adolescents in the city, we still have many, many children living in poverty, you know. So the demand is there, and we, you know, we are doing our best to respond to that. And we are seeing positive effects, and we are seeing savings materialise, and that will grow.
Thank you, Julie. Shona, would you like to come in, please?
Thank you, councillor Lewis. I would set my comments against an awareness of an increase of growing demand within the city, both in terms of an aging population and an increase in demographics, and also a fairly recent increase in the level of self-neglect, if you like, that people are experiencing. People are struggling to stay independent for longer. So the demands upon us, as well as young, young people coming through from transition, there are significant demands on our budget. We have a good track record of delivering against our savings targets. Aware that this year our targets are challenging and stretching, we have refreshed our internal processes. We have re-reviewed the terms reference of our budget review group, which is a monthly meeting that meets to consider every single budget action plan and to challenge ourselves if it's off track. We've also put in place a weekly meeting with the budget action plan owners to get a more granular understanding of the challenges and, and respond to them quicker than we might have done previously. We're average spend as a council across the region and across nationally. So over the last 10 years of savings targets, we have reduced strategically in those areas where we are higher cost to a more average area. We have seen in the last 18 months a steady reduction in admission to residential care, which is positive. It means that we are supporting more people to stay at home for longer. And also, the number of people overall who are in homes is also reducing, which is supporting the budget for next year. We've got some specific actions around our review and assessment teams, who are working with individuals and providers to reduce cost. We've done that year on year, and we continue to do that. We're also implementing a pilot project at the front door across the city, and we're hoping to tackle, when people come to us for the very first time, what we're hoping to do is give them support, guidance, information, advice, equipment to enable them to stay independent for longer. We know that that works, because we know how many people don't come to us once we've offered them that support. But also, when they do come back, we know that they are receiving a lower package of care than people who don't receive that intervention in the first place. And then the backdrop to a lot of this is the Home First Programme, which people will be aware of, which has delivered over the last 18 months and will continue to deliver over the next year. So a lot of activity, a lot of grip, a lot of control, and hopefully we will, we will deliver. Thank you.
Thank you, Shona. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to come back specifically on the adult social care points. I don't think I'm going to make any progress today on the reassurances I'm looking for from children and families. Around the care sector, the impact of Rachel Reeves' national insurance increase means the, the sector are telling us that their costs per place will go up by 10%, which is about 1,000 pounds a week. So it currently costs about 900 pounds a week for a place in a care home, and that will be 1,000 pounds a week as a consequence of the changes to national insurance and other things. The proposal of the council is to increase the fee we pay. We already pay less than that, 684 pounds per week per place. We're proposing to offset that 1,000 pound increase by a 3.6% rise, which equates to 25 pounds a week. So the care sector are going to have 1,000 pounds a week for each care place, more to pay, and we're proposing to give them 25 pounds to offset that. Can someone tell me what they think the practical effect of that will be on the sector?
Shona, please.
Thank you, councillor Lewis. My reassurance to that, councillor Lam, is that 95% of the care providers within Leeds have accepted the contract that we offer at the rate that we offer. So there is confidence within the market that they can support local authority-funded people at the rate that we're accepting them at. We will be monitoring the market over the next year to make sure that we are very, very clear about anyone who's exiting the market, why they're exiting the market, and just understanding the risks that they're inherent in the provision. We have an over-provision of residential care in the market at the moment. We work very closely with providers to support them on issues of sustainability. There's a team that works with people to offer them advice and guidance on how they might be able to manage the business that they deliver, which is valued by us, but in a way that's sustainable. So I'm hoping that the next year, the fee increases will be consistent with their sentiment to want to remain working with us as a local authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lam?
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate the response, but I've met with the representatives of the care sector in Leeds and had quite a bit of correspondence from them. And what they're telling me is something different, that they are expecting that quite a number of providers will go out of business based on this offer, quite a number will withdraw from the sector because they won't be able to, to afford it. And the pressure then falls back on the council and the NHS. We already know there are, I think, on average at the moment, it's up to about 275 patients every night in Leeds hospitals, who are not there for medical need, but because there isn't the provision for them to go home or to a care home place. And the sector has got the capacity to support that. The cost of them staying in a hospital bed is 3,000 pounds a week. So if we don't address this, we are going to have a real problem in the city. And I predict sadly that if we don't take action now, we are going to find that adults, just like children's, will be overspending again next year to meet the cost of not rising to this challenge now. Other comparable councils are recognising that the uplift we're offering is not enough. Indeed, the letter from the council to the providers recognises that the uplift is not enough to meet the demand. I have real concerns, and I'm not reassured, that we are not going to cause a care sector crisis over the next 12 months.
Shona, would you like to come in, please?
I will. Thank you, councillor Lewis. The number of people that are waiting to leave hospital at the moment is around about that number, but most of them are not wanting to go or needing to go into a residential care home. Most of them are in transition to a care provider or an intermediate care service, such as a recovery hub, such as the ones that we run on behalf of the intermediate ICB. So the, the number that's there is not the number of people who need residential care. If we were to place all of those people into residential care, our budget would be significantly challenged. So it's a very small proportion of those people who are on the way to residential care at the moment. I, I think that the conversations with the sector have been robust, and I also think that the number of providers that have accepted our contract demonstrates, at least this year, there's an assurance that they're willing to work with us at this stage, notwithstanding the obvious communication they've made around cost of pressure and the, the national insurance measures. But we are monitoring that. The commissioning team and Caroline are very much in contact with our providers. And sufficiency, stability and resilience is a key part of the work that we do to support the sector to stay in, in business and working with us effectively. I'm not, at this point, concerned about an exit from the market, but as I said earlier, we'll be monitoring that very, very carefully over the next few weeks and months. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, again?
Yeah, thank you. Just the last point, I just want to clarify, I'm not solely referring to residential care, but I'm also talking about home care and all the other settings you've described. If it comes to home care, the, the offer this year from the council is even worse. It makes the, the residential care offer look generous, at 3.5%, it's 1.6%. It's about 15 pounds a week for a 10% uplift in costs. And there are going to be consequences for this, for the quality and level of care and the provision. And as I say, I fear this is going to really come back in and bite us over the next 12 months.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper, please.
Thank you, Leader. And just to, to address a couple of points that councillor Lam has raised today, Executive Board, and hopefully give some reassurance to Executive Board members around the work that we're undertaking in the council. We have got a robust process in place around our action plans for any overspends within directorates. And that work is happening across the council, so across all directorates, that are taking responsibility and ownership of overspends within the council, and how we can bring those down and mitigate them going forward. I have to say that children's and families have made an excellent start in terms of starting to turn that overspend around by bringing in new innovative ideas around bringing children back to Leeds, about doing things differently that are increasing better outcomes for our children, but also bringing us some savings in terms of finances. And of course, as always, these things take time. We're talking about vulnerable children who maybe need moving from one place to another. It's about setting up that, that secure and that safety and the regulated places that we are needed when we're dealing with children who are looked after by the local authority. And as you would expect us, we are taking every one of those steps carefully to ensure that they are the right steps. But as Julie said, we are seeing the green shoots now coming through, and we would expect, as this year goes on and as next year starts in terms of the financial year, that those, those overspends would improve, given the progress we're seeing in terms of the steps that children's have taken around that. But we do have to also remember that, that in any one day, we may get a family in need of, of a placement of a number of children, that then we, as you would expect us, would, would of course make that placement and make that money available to ensure those vulnerable children are taken care of. And I know that you recognise that, councillor Lam, but it does make it difficult, therefore, to always be able to forecast accurately in terms of, of children's services or social care, indeed. But I'm really pleased with the start that we've made in terms of, of the innovation around and transformation in children's services. I think also to give Exec Board members and anybody out there that's watching in on Executive Board, that want some reassurance around the financial process within the council, we take this report every single Executive Board meeting. We have a report. We are open, we are transparent about the position that the council are in in terms of its finances throughout the whole organisation. So includes every directorate, includes every upturn, every downturn in those directorates, in spend, in budget action plans, in underspending, in overspend. And, and I want to reassure everybody that we'll continue to do that. So if anybody has got concerns about what might happen next month, next year, then we will still have that opportunity to continue to monitor the finances of this organisation, each and every Executive Board that we see. So we'll be able, councillor Lam, will be able to continue to raise any ongoing concerns that it may have about next year. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else wanting to come in, so I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 28, and I take it everybody is happy with those. That's great, thank you. And we'll move on to item seven and councillor Prior's papers, please.
Thank you, Leader. So this report updates Executive Board on the second action plan on the connecting Leeds transport strategy. During this action plan period, a range of improvements to the transport network are set to be delivered, from large-scale investments such as City Square, Alney Gyration, the 23 million pound connecting West Leeds project, as well as small-scale projects such as pedestrian crossings and a wide range of those. So this report does cover the need for us to collaborate further with both WICER and the DFT to advocate for further additional funding. And the report also offers a summary of the first action plan period from 21 to 24. I shall leave it there for introductory remarks.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, do you want to come in, please?
Yep, thank you, Chair. Few, few points and questions. So there's a lot in the report, mixed bag, some good things, some not so good things. I note that we're celebrating an award-winning City Square project. The only award I would give it is for making us the most inaccessible city centre in the country. There's talk of the City Bike Scheme, which has to be the worst value-for-money exercise we've ever conducted. So I think for every one pound people spend on a bike journey now, it costs the taxpayer 27 pounds to subsidise it. And our solution to that is to pump in another 1.1 million pounds to, to do even more. Perhaps someone could confirm that we're planning to withdraw from certain parts of the city because of antisocial behaviour and vandalism of the, of the bikes. So that's one, I think sometimes when things aren't working, it's better to say it's not working and stop doing it, rather than putting more money in. Obviously, we're asked to do exploratory work about the workplace parking levy, which is potentially 2,000 pounds per parking space for businesses in the city. So not, not content with a tax on people's jobs, we're now looking at a tax to get people to their job. I certainly cannot support that, and I think we should run that dead in its tracks right here. So for Gerrard's benefit, when it comes to recommendation C, I'll be voting against that. The key thing around the workplace parking levy is why is it being considered? And the reason for that is to fund potentially a local contribution to mass transit. And I'd also be grateful for some comments from the officers or councillor Prior about what our contributions are looking like towards bus franchising. And for the record, I'm a supporter of mass transit in Leeds. I think we absolutely should be getting on and moving forwards with it. I'm not a fan of franchising. The decision's been made, so hopefully it can work as, as best as possible. But in both cases, I think there's been a dishonesty from the West Yorkshire mayor and the combined authority about their selling of both of these, and who is going to pay and how. So we should be honest and say the transport levy is going back up from 2026 onwards, and Leeds City Council, council taxpayers will have to foot the bill for rebranding the buses, rebranding all the bus stops, putting Tracy Brabham's name on everything, and buying bus depots with zero guarantee of any improvements to bus services. And this workplace parking levy is to pay for mass transit, because we expect, as I understand it, that as the money's not confirmed yet by government, when they do hopefully confirm it, they will also be expecting local contributions. And so Leeds City Council from somewhere, along with all the other West Yorkshire councils, will have to find more money from their stretched budgets to hand over to the mayor to help to pay for mass transit. And it's better to be honest about that. I think we should be doing one and not the other, and putting the resource and energy and expertise on delivering the mass transit system that our city and the wider region desperately needs. But we should also be honest about the costs and where the money's coming from. When the consultation took place recently, and I think a quarter of 1% of the population responded, and that was a resounding success, there was no mention of who was going to pay and how. And every time I've challenged the mayor and said, what are you going to, is it going to be fare payers, taxpayers, is there going to be a new mayoral levy? We now know, we're looking at various levies. So let's just be honest about who's going to pay for this. But I think this is a massive block on growth if we, if we consider putting these kind of charges in. And I hope that Executive Board will join me in rejecting recommendation C today.
Thank you. And thank you for your honesty, councillor Lam, in condemning mine and councillor Harland's residents. You would like our residents to have the worst bus company in the country forevermore, without any prospect of improvement. So I think, yes, you did, because you opposed franchising. And without franchising, without franchising, sorry, I'm speaking councillor Lam, I'll let you come in. Sorry, councillor Lam, I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking, and I hope you could give me the same courtesy in this meeting. And then obviously, as we do in a courteous meeting, I will allow you to speak later. But without bus franchising, residents in large parts of Leeds would continue to have Arriva Yorkshire, the country's worst bus service. My residents experience that and reduce services and cancelled and delayed services. And you've been honest enough yourself to confirm you're satisfied for that to continue. So there was some honesty on your part there. I'll let you come back in now, because like I say, we do behave courteously in this meeting.
Yeah, well, you just completely... Yeah, well, you just completely misrepresented what I said. So I would like you to apologise and correct the record. I would like better buses for my constituents and your constituents. Being opposed to franchising is not the same as condemning your, it's your opinion is that buses will be better under franchising, mine is not. What you said was a complete misrepresentation of what I said. I would like you to apologise and correct the record.
No, I'm satisfied with my interpretation that without bus franchising, we'd continue to have the worst bus company in Yorkshire operating in my ward. I'm satisfied with my interpretation, councillor Lamb.
I'll leave it at this point, except I'd like to accept I didn't say that.
You said you oppose franchising, which means we continue with the current deregulated market. I say I'm satisfied with my interpretation. Okay, councillor Prior, please.
Thank you, Leader. I just want to take apart some of the things you've said. I mean, first of all, you said that people are finding the city centre inaccessible. But actually, we've seen footfall in Leeds city centre increase by 1.4. You were shaking your head, it's increased by 1.4% in 24 compared to 23. So actually, if more people are getting into the city centre, it's simply inaccurate to say that it's inaccessible. Kirkgate Market's had an increase of 4%, almost 6 million visitors. If you're saying it's inaccessible, how are those 6 million people getting to Kirkgate Market? It's just, it's an inaccurate reflection of what is happening in our city centre. And to talk about Beryl Bikes, as of the report from autumn last year, we've had more than 17,000 users on 70,000 journeys. And what's that contributed to is saving six tonnes of carbon from our atmosphere. And a third of these journeys were taking, were replacing car and van trips. So if we're talking about we need our roads to be clearer for people who, some people may need to use a car, whether it's disability, whether they're doing, you know, certain trips that can't be done on public transport. Actually, we want that modal shift for some people to use bikes and active travel if they can. So actually, getting more people on those bikes, these 70,000 journeys are contributing to making the city centre more accessible. Yes, we have had some issues with vandalism on the Beryl Bikes and that's something we're working very closely with the mayor, with the police on to try and tackle. But some of the costs you're quoting are equally capital costs. So it's quite disingenuous to then divide a capital cost by the number of journeys when actually those number of journeys are going to continue for a number of years into the future. So, you know, maybe in a few years you'll come and say the, you know, journeys have been cut in cost on Beryl Bikes, if that's how you're calculating it. I do think it's a great scheme, it's one I want to see extended further, it's one I want to see more people using. I use it myself occasionally. It is keeping additional cars off the road and helping accessibility. On the workplace parking levy, I want to be really clear, there is not a recommendation in the paper today to introduce it. What the recommendation today is looking at options of how a workplace parking levy would work, yes, as a local, potentially as a local contribution to something, to mass transit. You've said today you support mass transit, you've said in WICA meetings you support mass transit. And actually, having a local contribution to that has been a longstanding element of that scheme. If you don't support us looking at workplace parking levy, what would you want us to look at for local contribution to mass transit?
Councillor Lamb?
Yeah, just deal with a couple of those things. So on the 1.4%, what I'm hoping councillor Prior is able to tell us, because he's usually on top of these figures, is how much of the city centre increase in footfall is down to the increase in people living in the city centre? And how much is down to people visiting the city centre? So I'm sure you'll have those figures available. In terms of how do we fund mass transit? Actually, there's all manner of innovative models. First of all, we have to be honest about the cost, who's going to pay for it and how. I don't think taxing people out of their cars is the way to get them onto mass transit, particularly when the initial routes are going to be quite limited and will not be of benefit to many. I think there's a much bigger role for the private sector in delivering mass transit. And I think there are far more creative ways that we can look at. So, and we all know, once you start exploring something, that's usually a pretty good indication that there's a plan coming down the line to do it. If we do think it's a bad idea, let's say so and not do it. That's my position on this, I think there's better ways. And as I said, I want us to be speaking with one voice on mass transit and lobbying together that it needs to happen regardless of party politics. It's very difficult when the way of working is not to include us in these conversations until it gets to this point and not take other people's views into account.
I must take it on bridge with you saying you've not been included up until this point. This point is seeking issues and seeking people's views and seeking how it would work. Saying you've not been consulted before the consultation, it just doesn't fly. We're at a very early stage. I'll repeat that the recommendation on the paper is not to introduce this. The recommendation is to look at how it would work because it has worked in other areas in the country. And again, repeat the point, you know, you say there are other ways of funding this. I've asked you what they are and all you can say is there are innovative and creative ways of funding this. There's no detail there. It is, there will need to be a substantial local contribution to mass transit. This is one potential route. All the exec board paper is doing today is looking at how that might work as one potential solution for that. Footfall, sorry, so the footfall's calculated by cameras in different locations around the city centre. So no, they don't differentiate why someone is in the city centre. So they are there to monitor trends and patterns. There is different data from different positions. I think the one we most commonly quote is on BRIGIT. But that's why we also take figures such as Kirkgate Market. So when we can see that footfall is increasing at a range of about 250%, the speed at which is increasing in the city centre, actually, we can see what people are doing in the city centre and where they're going. So for example, they're clearly therefore shopping. That's something that's increasing faster than other elements.
Councillor Lamb, please.
Yep, thank you, that's fine. Happy to accept the challenge. If you want to defer item C, I'll be happy to work with officers and bring a paper back suggesting some alternative ways of financing mass transit, if you'd like me to do that. It's not my role as an opposition member, but I'm more than happy to accept that challenge. And what we can do around footfall is show the difference of how many more people live in the city centre now than did over the past five years, say. So if you could provide that information, that will help us to understand whether actual visitors to the city centre is driving a 1.4% increase in footfall or whether it's the general day-to-day movements of the very many more people with all the student accommodation that now live here.
First of all, not to repeat myself, the recommendation on the workplace parking levy here is just an exploratory recommendation. So if you want to bring forward ideas, I'm more than happy to look at those and those can be looked at alongside. In terms of footfall data, I can provide you footfall data hour by hour for the past multiple years going back, if you want, if you really want to get into the data. It is, for people who enjoy data and spreadsheets, it is great to look at. You can see the effect of when there's snow, you can see the effect of when the trains aren't running, you can see the effects of when there are specific events on in town and festivals. So while they are raw numbers, so you would be extrapolating why people are there, you can actually look at a lot of behaviour hour by hour. So you can, a lot of it is linked to events. So you can see that people are coming into the city centre to attend things. And I think, you know, that brings in the broader point of when we talk about culture spend in the city centre, we see how much of the local economy is based on culture spend. Because at the same time, while more people are living in the city centre, more people are also working from home. You can really see there's a difference on, initially after Covid, there was a bit of a dip on Mondays and Fridays. Mondays seems to be a regular day for people coming to work. Friday is still, there are still fewer people coming in. So I'm happy to, if you tell me the scope of what data you're looking for, I will happily provide it. There is a phenomenal amount.
Don't get councillor Prior on spreadsheets, you'll regret it. Just turning to the paper, so just turning to the paper in paragraph 73. It's very clear in terms of what's before us today that a workplace parking levy is not the only option to raise local funding and alternatives will often be explored. So it sounds like you're going to be pushing an alternative, as per the paper, to us councillor Lamb. Very excited for that.
If you're going to give me the officer capacity, I'm more than happy to take up the challenge. But we need the work to do it, as you would have as executive.
Oh, sorry, I thought you, I'm sorry, I thought you had the answers already.
I've got some of them, but we need to work them up into a paper, don't we?
Great, well, I look forward to receiving some of the answers. Angela, please.
Thank you councillor Lewis and thank you councillor Lamb. There are quite a few points that I'll deal with in turn and then pass to colleagues as well. I'd start by the footfall because there are other data points that we would triangulate to measure access to the city centre. One being on table seven in the report, which talks about usage of the train station. So you'll see that in 2024, this was the first year since 2019 that we'd had a return to pre-pandemic levels. In fact, I think we had about 35,000 additional users of the train station than we did in 2019. And what's that is really showing us is that whilst we didn't have a comparable service pattern, and I won't answer any of those questions here, what we had is more demand of people coming into the city centre. And that travel pattern has changed. So we've seen a dip in Monday and Friday travel and a real increase in leisure travel on a Saturday and Sunday. But more recently, that Friday number is really recovering too. So we have those data stats every month that we circulate, if they are of interest. And then coming back to the workplace parking levy, it's one of a number of mechanisms that we will be exploring along with WICA colleagues and colleagues in other districts about how we could potentially raise a local contribution. And I think it's really helpful just to kind of drill in what a workplace parking levy is because that's not a levy on commuter parking in parking that are accessible car parks throughout the city. And it's not a levy on car parks for leisure or any type of cultural use. What it is, it's a private car parking space which is provided as part of employment. So for instance, it might be the basements of large office buildings, et cetera. And what this piece of work does is helps us work with businesses in the city to accurately document the number of parking spaces we've got available and to seek their views. Now, we have done some early market engagement to make sure that this wasn't a surprise to our biggest occupiers in the city. And we've had a range of responses. What we really have had is an overwhelming response to delivering mass transit for the city and a real desire to work collaboratively to see how collectively we can do that. So it won't be the only mechanism that we will explore. But we're doing this very transparently and very early on to gauge everybody's views. I'll just pass to colleagues if there's anything more specific they wanted to pick up on City Square or the bikes.
Thank you, Angela. Perhaps just on the bikes, there's going to be, on the back of the discussions with WICA and the injection of further cash, there will be a relaunch in April, May time. And I think it's really important that we get behind the scheme because it is an important part in our armoury, if you like, in terms of offering choices to people of Leeds. And it is positively received. Unfortunately, as has been pointed out, there has been some antisocial behaviour associated with it. And hopefully, the communities can come together and all partners and relevant interested organisations can come together to try and put a stop to that because that is ruining a positive scheme for the many and all the advantages that it has. Even with that extra injection of cash, it still represents, in terms of the business case, good value for money. So, and that's why it was ultimately approved. And just probably finally, without reopening everything else up, I'd just say that certainly in my experience, I can't recall a major scheme where a local contribution hasn't been required by Department for Transport. That is just the process. So by default, we are expecting to have to make, and given the cost of mass transit, which will be, we know, very significant, a local contribution will be very significant indeed. And so we do need to explore all options and that's what we are intending to do.
Thank you. Councillor Lamb, please.
Three more quick points, if I may. Can we get an update on what's happened with the White Rose Rail Station? And when we expect to see that? Angela referred to increase in rail travel into the city centre. But am I right in saying that local rail station growth is down 24% in the same period from 2019? And also, can you give us the comparable figures for bus journeys and bus patronage into the city centre, which I also understand is down on 2019?
Thank you. I mean, White Rose Station is a combined authority project. So what I suggest we do is we get a written briefing on those, on those three projects for you councillor Lamb. Angela, please.
Thank you. So just dealing with the local rail, I don't have that data in, holding that in top of my head. So we can provide that and we'll work with our WICA colleagues to get you it. And the same with bus franchising, sorry, Gary has it, thank you.
Hi councillor Lamb. So on page 115 to 117, there's some data tables in there that do include bus patronage over those years. So you can see the comparisons both on individual services, where we've intervened and seen a positive impact since that intervention. But you are right in saying that bus figures are below the 2019 level.
Okay, I don't see anybody else wanting to comment on this paper. So I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 78. And councillor Lamb has already stated his position. Councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, just to clarify, I mean, on recommendation A, quite happy to note the progress. B, I would like to reserve my position and C, I'm against.
Thank you for that clarification. And I take it everybody else is happy with that paper? That's great, thanks. We'll move on to councillor Prior's second paper, please.
Thank you, Leader. So this report updates the executive board on the completion of the Leeds flood alleviation scheme, with the last phase of the scheme to become operationally ready during 2025. The report notes a scheme is clear evidence of the council's ability to deliver large-scale nationally significant infrastructure when funding is made available. This is the largest flood alleviation scheme in the UK, delivered by a local authority. And I think something we can be immensely proud of. I think those members who have been around since 2015, obviously, remember the Boxing Day floods vividly. They remember the damage it did to the city. So really just want to put on record my thanks to all officers who've done a phenomenal job at getting this done at speed. And of course, huge thanks to our partners. We've been working with the Environment Agency, BAM, Mot McDonald and ACOM, as well as a much wider set of partners on the project board. Overall, this is a scheme which protects 4,000 homes, 1,000 businesses, as well as roads, railways, communication networks, power supplies, and a scheme which safeguards over 33,000 jobs. There's a huge economic benefit to this too. A real great example of partnership work on a large infrastructure project delivered for the people of Leeds. So this report notes that the scheme was delivered in phases over the last decade, from conception to completion, with an overall cost of £200 million to reduce the risk of flooding from the river air in Leeds, providing a one-in-200-year standard of protection with allowance for climate change up to 2069. It's also worth noting that if the full scheme is used to capacity just once, it will save the city more carbon than it costs to build the scheme. So there's a great environmental aspect to it too. Executive board is recommended to note the report and the ongoing commitment to maintain and operate the flood alleviation scheme, as well as the maintenance budget from the council's revenue budget. And exec board is also recommended to note the proposal to bring a separate report to executive board on the creation of the Air Resilience Company. I'm really pleased that Jonathan Moxon is here to present to us in a bit more detail about the protection we now have in the city. But first, I think Gary is going to just say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, please.
Thank you councillor Lewis. If I may, I just, I'd like to thank councillor Prior for his words there. And just reflect, just for a few minutes, before we get into a video of the actual scale and extent of the scheme. It's been a long journey getting to this point and completing the construction of this project. Certainly for me, it goes back to 2008 when I started. But it's been a really true team leads effort involving many external partners, as councillor Prior has said, but also many different colleagues from across the whole council, many different directorates over many, many years. Obviously, I have to put on record, and I would want to put on record, my thanks to all of them, but especially my team. And I know Mark sat in the audience today and obviously Jonathan's here, but there are many others that have been involved in this scheme as well. They've done a fantastic job over certainly the last decade, if not longer. Unusually in exec board, we are going to show a video today and Jonathan's going to talk you through it. It's quite a foreshortened one than that we've shown before, but hopefully it gives you a flavour of the scale and the extent of it. And reflecting, there have been many challenges along the way in delivering this scheme, not least Covid, high inflation and of course, many different storms that we've had over the last decade or so. But we've persevered and we've reached the end of construction now. As we do, it's probably, it could be agreed that we now it could be agreed that we now move to the most difficult part, which is taking ownership of the scheme from the contractor and actually operating it and maintaining it. And obviously, that's where Jonathan and his team come in. And that work honours the commitment that the council gave to secure funding for this project over those 10, 15 years and then to deliver it. At that point, it probably should be noted that in some areas of the country, they're still talking about their schemes being delivered, Leeds, team leads, cross-party, cross-directorate, cross-council has got on and delivered it, and the city is in a good place now in terms of high standard of protection from flooding. Thank you, leader.
Thank you. Jonathan, please.
Thank you councillor Lewis. Thank you, Gary. So this is, is a shortened version of a video. There are quite a few resources online, so there's lots of information about the scheme. It will be very quick. And, and if you see cars speeding, it is because we've speeded the video up. It's not because we've got a problem. We're committed to vision zero. Hopefully, this will work. So this is from Wellington Road upwards. So it builds on the scheme that we've got in the city centre already. So Fast One covers the city centre from the station down. This is the stretch from the station upwards, up towards Kirkstall. A key feature here, I think, it's really important to, to show that we were enabling development there. We were doing a lot around sowing infrastructure into existing buildings. And this is a good example as well, at Leeds Industrial Museum, where we've, we've worked around the artefacts, around the existing museum, supported the museum to sort of have a, a longer-term, sustainable future with defences. This is showing a control structure that's upstream and downstream. There are three different sets of that in the scheme that are actually automated. They require manual and active operation. This is at Red Coat Lane, so a little bit further up Kirkstall Road. This was actually the first place that we saw breach of the River Ayr in 2015 on Boxing Day. And there was also a substation there, if you saw on the left-hand side. So they're quite a vital electricity infrastructure asset that supplies notable things, including the hospitals in the city. That would have been at flood risk, but is much reduced flood risk. We've got infrastructure that's tied into existing buildings. It's in quite a tight and confined space. We're coming up towards the home office here. And again, there would have been infrastructure there that's active, control structures. This is showing the area around Leeds Rugby and the interaction with the railway just downstream of Kirkstall Bridge. Very confined, complicated and tricky working environment. You can see some of the infrastructures in the river there at the time of the video. And that's one of the final stages that we've completed on construction, protecting the Harrogate Lines, a very important, in network rail's own words, very important part of the Northern Rail Network. This is then looking back towards Kirkstall Bridge Inn. Very good beer garden there, that's got a slightly higher standard of protection now as well. And there's a very famous picture that you'll see online of people sat in floodwaters, which we obviously would not recommend, but it did prove a point post-Pourson Day floods. There's a large amount of habitat creation in this area as well. So this is the area opposite Kirkstall Abbey. So this is Kirkstall Meadows. There's a long flood embankment, which in itself is quite a complicated asset, but it's again at the side of the railway line, but there's a lot of habitat creation there. This is Newlay Bridge, so a heritage asset, very close to properties. There's a very high quality of finish here because of the heritage aspect. Very complicated location to do an infrastructure project like this in terms of access. And the engineering's very complicated there as well. A number of different assets that we will have to maintain there. This is at Appleley Bridge. This is actually in, neighbouring Bradford. So we've done a scheme in conjunction with Bradford, and they will maintain these assets going forward. We're working very closely with them now. But you can see the proximity to the houses. The level of disruption for the residents there was very high, but the contracting team, the project team, did a brilliant job of managing that. This is the Carveli flood storage area. So this is extremely innovative technology that protects the city and holds back the floodwaters to a tune of 1.8 million cubic metres upstream of the city centre, and is an active defence. And this is a very quick snapshot of the type of thing we're doing in the upper catchment, right up to Malham, at the top end of the catchment. Sorry, I won't play it again. Stop that. I'm really sorry I cantered through that, but that was just a very quick whistle-stop tour of the scheme.
Thank you, Jonathan. That was a really helpful overview. councillor Prior, councillor Lam. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you. I'm absolutely delighted that this paper is here, because this means there's something on this agenda that I can fully get behind and support and congratulate you on. This does show that councils and the public sector can deliver big infrastructure and do it well. And it's an amazing job, well done. And I'll make the slightly flippant comment that thank goodness it was done under the previous government, because the funding's been cut under Rachel Reeves austerity 2.0. But this was done and is an excellent job and a credit to the administration and to the officers. Hopefully, we never have to see it in full operation, but we, as someone who was around at the time, it is absolutely right that this has been done and been delivered and protects the city going forward. The one I ask or would have is given actually how big a success we can chalk this up as, I think we should be doing a piece of work to bring back here about the lessons learned positively. We always talk about learning lessons when things go wrong, but when we've got something right, actually, it's even more important that we learn those lessons to pass them on to, not just for ourselves, but for others who are taking on big public sector infrastructure projects. So I'd like to suggest, in addition to the recommendations that we've got, that we ask for a piece of work along those lines to, to learn the good lessons of this project. And I know and don't doubt it wasn't without its challenges along the way. But I think that it's really important that we celebrate a success, but also learn from it and try and apply those successes to, to future schemes.
Thank you councillor Lam. councillor Venna, please.
Yeah, I just wondered if I could speak for a moment, because of course, my ward was flooded on Boxing Day in 2015. I just wanted to say, this scheme is just fantastic. The pub that you referred to, where people, the famous photo of the people drinking in the, when it was flooded, that, the flood defence is made, it's, it's been done so aesthetically well. So it's made a really lovely outdoor space for the bridge pub that used to flood all the time. But also in the abbey grounds itself, we've got a lovely viewing platform that I always show people when they come to visit me now, that you can walk out and you can view the flood defences and you can view the Salmon Pass. And you wouldn't think you were in the inner city. It's, it's just been done to such a high standard. And the communication's been really good all the way through as well. I don't think, I don't think unless you've been through flooding, you realise how devastating it is and how traumatised people are who've been through it. Because in my ward, it was homes, but primarily small businesses and mainly small independent businesses that got flooded. And for years afterwards, I'd have people that would ring me when it was raining, you know, to just tell me how worried they were, because people just couldn't bear the thought of going through that again. And the, as councillor Lam said, hopefully it'll never need to be fully used, but just the reassurance and the security and the comfort it gives people can't be overstated. So I just wanted to join the comments, really saying how grateful we are for everything your team did, how well it's been done and how much something that's protective has also added to our ward in terms of aesthetics. So thank you.
Thank you. councillor Arif, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'll carry on with the praise. I visited the industrial museum a couple of months back, and the feedback from the staff on the ground was that the working relationship was excellent. And actually, they felt as though the benefits of the industrial museum were great as well, and they were able to further leverage in funding on the back of the scheme. So I just want to say thank you for myself as well, because that clearly was a really positive relationship with, with the industrial museum as well. So, well done. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Prior.
I mean, in, in the spirit of kind of cross-party happiness over this, I, I would be, perhaps I won't mention kind of praising councillor Blake for going to lobby the government to, to make them U-turn on their decision to cut previous flood defending, defences from, from Leeds. And I think that now Baroness Blake, I think, did a fantastic job in making the government really see how desperately needed this was for Leeds. But again, just, just to conclude this section, again, I just really, I can't praise officers enough. I think this is a scheme that exemplifies team leaders. At its best, it's something I'm immensely proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary, please.
Thank you, leader. Just coming back on the sort of question that was left hanging in terms of lessons learned. We, we have done presentations, if you like, articulating what we've gone through and experiences and some of the lessons that we've learned. We can build on that, if, if that would be helpful. And I'm more than happy to liaise with councillor Prior and councillor Lam on that, if that would be helpful, leader.
Thank you, Gary. I'll just sum up by adding my thanks to everybody, to the officers that have worked on it. And I know Angela and Gary's team, as well as this, have delivered a huge amount of project value to the city and on time and on budget as well. And I think it is one of the things we do extremely, extremely well here. I won't start listing all the projects in case I forget one, but it is something we do well. You're quite right, councillor Lam, it's something that we should be proud of. But also, I know councillor Venna's present as Kirkstall Ward member and spoke, but lots of councillors, small parties have worked along the, along the river with this project as well. And it has been a really good example of that. So with that, I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 178, which look at the, look at the content of the report. And also, and I think the really important bit, we've talked a lot about the construction, the really important bit to say is the continued operation and maintenance of the, the elements of the scheme. It is a really, was a really complicated scheme to build, as we've talked a lot about, and one that will need a lot of care and attention in the future. So just to confirm that as well. So I take it from the comments made, everybody's happy with the recommendations. That's great. Great, everybody's happy with those. Thank you, everybody. And we'll move on to item nine and councillor Hayden's paper, please.
Thank you, Chair. This report is the outcome of the consultation on a proposal to close Queensway Primary School. This report provides an update following the consultation on the proposal to close Queensway Primary School in Yidden. It highlights the significant and growing challenges facing the school and requests executive board's approval to publish a statutory notice to close the school at the end of the academic year. This is undoubtedly a difficult and emotional time for everyone connected to the school. I want to acknowledge the dedication and tireless efforts of the staff, families and wider community who have worked so hard to support the school and its pupil through the years. And I want to add, I want to say how, thank you to everyone connected with the school for all the work that they've done. However, the reality is that with only 72 children currently on roll compared to a capacity of 210, the school is in an increasingly unsustainable position. The area has seen a significant decline in births in recent years, and there's a growing budget deficit held by the school. This is forecast to rise to nearly 1.4 million at the end of 2027, 28. Unfortunately, this threatens the school's ability to continue providing the quality of education and support that every child deserves. As a local authority, we have a duty to consider the long-term viability of the school, but I want to make it clear that this is not a decision we take lightly. The report includes details of the consultation and next steps should this proposal progress. The council will continue to work closely with affected families to support every child's transition to appropriate alternative settings, particularly those with special educational needs and disabilities, ensuring their needs are fully met through the provision of bespoke support. This paper is being brought forward today to allow executive board to make a decision on closure in June 2025, should the recommendations in this report be approved. I'll leave it there.
Thank you councillor Hayden. councillor Lam.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I've got a few questions and some general comments about this. We referred to members who were around in the floods, that have been around as sometimes around the table, I've going right back to the days of education Leeds, and recall some of the, the closures and things that were brought forward that turned out to be terrible mistakes. And I'll start by saying that I can understand why officers looking at figures and numbers at a high level have come to the recommendation that they've come to. However, this isn't just about figures and numbers on a page. This is about children and families. It's about teachers. It's about communities. And it's the job of officers to do the number crunching and come forward and present the facts. It's the job of politicians to then consider the human impact and the effect on communities and actually take the decision. And I would say, at this point, I can't support the recommendation to publish a statutory notice. The reasons for that are, I don't believe we have in front of us all the possible options. I have, we all know, we have serious capacity issues around SEND in the city, and we need more space for children with special educational needs and disabilities. And all the indications are that that pressure is going to continue going forwards. There are a large proportion of the pupils at this school that have special educational needs or disabilities. And actually, I think we should take the opportunity to thank and applaud the school and the school community for the job they have done in very challenging circumstances to turn their performance round and go from requires improvement to being rated as a, as a good school today. Closing good schools in communities that value them should be the absolute last resort when we've ruled out everything else. And my concern, as I say, I understand why the officers have brought what they have. But as politicians, having read, I don't know if others have, I've read every single one of the 1,015 responses to the consultation. I've had a tonne of correspondence about this issue, more than anything else than has been on a recent executive board agenda. And I think we should pause and think again and ask the officers to look at all the other options before we come to this decision. The questions I've got, which I'm hoping can help with, first of all, it's difficult to tell, but from the way the consultation responses are presented, I don't believe either the Member of Parliament or the three ward members for that community have responded directly to the consultation. So can you confirm if that's correct? Can you confirm that they have all been briefed and by who? And therefore, what their view was, because it's important that we know what the local elected representatives think about it when we're making a decision. I'd just like to understand if the council has done a full cost benefit analysis, including what the long-time financial burden will be on other schools and transport. What specific plans are there to support displaced children, particularly those with special educational needs and disabilities? Have we considered what the impact will be on the community? And what is the long-term strategy to, to deal with the site? And also to make sure there's sufficient special educational needs capacity in Ayrborough? Or will these children have to be bussed and taxied and have independent travel arrangements to get them elsewhere in the city? So that's it for now. Personally, my view is we shouldn't be supporting the publication of a statutory notice, and we should be asking officers to bring back a full options appraisal of all the things that could be done in that community to address this. And just keeping it, the, the financial projections are in the future. One of the reasons the school's in this position is because of the previous announcement to close the school, which wasn't preceded with and led to, I think, 40-plus children leaving the school. They wouldn't be in such a financial challenge if we hadn't done that in the first place. So the council have got a big degree of responsibility for the position the school finds itself in. They have turned around the standards, I believe, with the right support. They could turn around the financial position as well.
Thank you councillor Lam. councillor Hayden first, and I'll bring Dan in.
Thank you. So there's, there's a lot there, and I will ask Dan to answer the specific questions. Yes, all members of, all members of council affected and the MP were briefed. Dan can give you details about when, and that was done. I, it is in Ottley and Yidden Ward, and the three Liberal Democrat members of council who represent that ward have not submitted a formal submission to the consultation. That is up to them. We, in terms of, there was no announcement to close the school previously. There was a previous
There was a previous consultation in which, due to the response to the consultation, that the decision was made not to close the school, which is what consultations are for. If you look at the graph in the paper, the falling birth rate are affecting all schools, and there is a big difference now between the numbers on role in other schools, including Queensway, sorry, and the number of children being born, and the projections, which were the same projections as two and a half years ago, are playing out and will remain into the future, that we have a falling birth rate across Leeds, it's particularly pronounced in this area. Therefore, I am confident that we will not need to move children to other parts of the city, there are local schools with places available, and this is a mainstream school with a high proportion of special needs pupils who will be looked after and will be given the most appropriate place by the team who will work with each individual family. We have many, many schools across the city with a high proportion of special educational needs pupils who do a fantastic job. Yes, Queensway School have done a fantastic job in turning around an inadequate judgment into a good judgment, and I would like to thank the head and all the teachers and teaching assistants and the community governors, but also our school improvement team who have worked closely with the school over the last couple of years. This is not a decision we take lightly, but we have a particular problem in this. Any other options, the other option would be to keep it open, and in its current place, it's too much at risk. Councillor Lamb, you mentioned that it is wrong to not look at our finances in terms of, that's not good for children and families when we discuss the first financial paper, so it would be remiss of us to not consider this school's budgetary position and the fact that it's not going to get better, because unless more children come into the area and into the school, the budget will not increase, and that puts a particular risk on the council's budget if we don't do anything at all. And as you said, that is not good for children and families to take that kind of risk with the finances. Dan, if you could come in with the specifics, thank you.
Thank you. Dan, please.
Thank you. I would echo councillor Hayden's points about this not being a decision that the council or the executive board would want to take lightly, but coming back on a couple of bits, in terms of the query about alternative options, the options are set out in paragraph 60, albeit that the point made by councillor Lamb in relation to the pressure on specialist places versus the reduction in need for mainstream places is actively something which we're considering. We can't bring forward any proposals in relation to that at the moment because they would be considered as a related proposal, and the decision that we're proposing to put forward if statutory notices were published is the closure of a mainstream school. We can't convert a mainstream school to a special school, and that's a different process, and we can't do that. And I also can't bring forward any further detail around those explorations at this point in time for that reason. In relation to the elected members and the MP, although councillor Hayden has answered in relation to whether or not a specific response was submitted, all of them were either briefed by myself personally or by members of my team if they weren't able to attend. In terms of the cost-benefit analysis, because there are so many dependencies which are related to the HCP process or to parental preference, we can't give an accurate setting out of how the different costs would pan out. What we do know is that there would be a risk to the council ultimately of 1.3, nearly 1.4 million pounds, which would crystallise on the children and families' budget, as we've heard it is very challenging at the moment if the school were allowed to continue to be open over the course of the next three years. I'd also flag in relation to transport, again, because we don't know where any future children would end up being placed and where they would live, we don't know what the transport costs would be, but it seems likely that if there were a proposal developed around a SEND provision, that would reduce the transport burden around SEND, where there is usually a high proportion of children who are transported, if that was something that would be a future use of the school. In relation to the questions about SEND and the community and the site, all of that work, notwithstanding the fact that we have done an EDCI screening, which is appended to this report, a full equality impact assessment will be concluded if the decision today is taken to publish statutory notices, because a decision couldn't be made in June without one of those, and we're absolutely determined and must be compliant with our equality duty. Couple of other points I would make, just in relation to the question that you mentioned in relation to the previous consultation. Yes, always, when we consult on decisions like this, it's an inevitable and unfortunate thing that happens, which is that parents and families, regardless of whether a decision has been made, start to vote with their feet. I think it was 31 families, it wasn't 40, that left during the process of the 2022 consultation. I think I've probably covered everything, unless someone wants to tell me that I haven't. Apologies, there's quite a lot in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Hayden, you referred to the Ottley and Yedon members, and I'm also referring to the Gaisley members, because this very much affects that ward as well. What nobody responded to was what the view of the MP was and what the view of the members was in Gaisley and Ottley and Yedon. It's normal to think about that. I'll come back if you want to answer that.
I think it's very difficult to ask questions of people that aren't in the room, Alan. We've heard the question that you, we've heard the question you have raised, but I think it's quite difficult to ask the views of people that aren't in the room. I'll see if officers or councillor Hayden have something to come back to on that one.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to make the same point, that I wouldn't want to speak for people in their absence, but ultimately, we've briefed the MP and those members, all of them, from both of those areas, and the consultation hasn't recorded a formal response.
Right. Well, I can only accept that, and so I appreciate you can't speak for others, so what we know is all of the relevant local politicians were consulted, were briefed in full, and none of them have decided to submit a view to this. Okay. Yeah, councillor Hayden, you said last time the consultation showed that people didn't want this school to close, so it didn't, and that's what consultations are for. This time, you've asked the same question and got the same answer. 90% of over 1,000 people are opposed to this closure. I've read each and every one of those stories and how important this school is to that community, I'm sure you have as well. Surely, we have a duty to listen, and I understand the financial challenges, I understand the issues, I understand, I'm not saying there isn't a problem that needs solving here, and I don't think doing nothing is an option. What I'm saying is I think we should not go with a statutory notice, we should not publish a statutory notice. What we should do is ask officers to come back with a full range of options, because it's being presented, and you're presenting this, as if the only option is to close it. I don't accept that. I think there are other things that we could do. I don't have all of the answers here myself, but that's the point. I'm being asked to make a decision, and I don't have all of the options in front of me, so I cannot support it.
Thank you. Councillor Hayden, please.
We have spent the last two years looking at all the options. We have no control over the numbers of the PAM, the pupil numbers that other schools hold. As I said, this is not a problem, this is a problem that's acutely affecting Queensway, but it's a problem that is affecting all the other schools in the area. We have a falling birth rate, which is particularly acute in this area, it's affecting Queensway the most, and other than, I don't know, I haven't an option of more babies being born. It's very stark. The situation here, two and a half years on, is that we're in a far riskier position, a far worse position in terms of the birth rate, in terms of the projections going forward, and in terms of the budget deficit than we were two years ago. Those problems have not, there is, in my view, and I accept there are different views, but we've looked at other options of other schools reducing their PAMs, because that is an option, but it's not an option that's available to us as a local authority, and therefore, the only option here is, in our view, and I accept that you will have a different view, is to close this school and to make sure that all the children are given the best possible education that we can give them in their local area.
Thank you. I thought Julie had her hand up and then down, so Julie, please.
Thank you, councillor Lewis. I think I would just like to reiterate what's already been said in terms of wanting to really acknowledge the tireless efforts of the head teacher, of the leadership team, the governors and the staff in the school, and that's really, really important. I think, as has been said, the local authority has been supporting the school, has been working alongside the school, the leadership team for the last two years on their improvement journey, you know, supporting them with that, and also with their budget deficit action plan. So I think the report does outline, you know, in 2022, additional school improvement funding was given to support safeguarding arrangements. In 2023, additional school improvement funding was given, really in the means of consultants and advisers for the school. In 2024, school improvement funding was given focused on assessment, reading, writing and SEND. In 2425, additional funding and professional support was given in relation to mentoring and coaching for the head teacher. There's been increased school improvement advisers, there's been increased support looking at the finance and the general improvement of the school. I won't rehearse it all because it's all set out in the report, but what I wanted to, I suppose, really highlight is the work that the local authority has been doing with the school to really try and support it with the challenges that it has. But the reality is, in 2526, the deficit is looking at 608,000 pound. In 2627, 938,000. In 2728, 1,300,000. And we do have a duty as a local authority to manage sufficiency of school places in the city, and at times, that's a very, very challenging, difficult decision. I think the other thing just to highlight is because of the ongoing budget challenges, you know, and in response to those, the school itself has had to make some very difficult decisions, reducing the PAM, not replacing some of its non-teaching staff, not replacing the deputy head, not being able, you know, having to reduce the hours of the SEND co. And that does really, you know, I suppose, I suppose it does challenge the school's ability to support pupils with SEND in the longer term, you know, and perhaps to put that at risk, and we've got to look at the longer term. So it's a very, very difficult decision, but I think it is clear that, you know, this is valid, it is appropriate, and it's necessary because, you know, the school's viability, really, you know, is in question, and we've got to think longer term about providing, you know, education and the welfare of children in the city, especially those with additional needs. Just in relation to your question, councillor Lamb, you know, so perhaps more vulnerable children, children on a child protection plan, children looked after, children who do have SEND, there is professional teams around those children and those families who will support individual, you know, transitions, you know, should that be the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of other points, which I'll preface with my earlier point about the fact that we are actively considering other options, but which can't be part of this proposal. There's something about just acknowledging, again, that the improvement in quality, which has come at the cost of effort and hard work and sustained support, has also come with a financial cost. One of the things that we've done as part of trying to seek efforts to sort of support those children and young people with SEND ahead of a potential transition to another school, is we've invited one of our local special inclusion learning centre principals in, and in conversation, it's become apparent that, so in a special school nowadays in Leeds, we might have a pupil ratio in a class of perhaps, you know, 10 to 12 people in a class, and in the inclusion classes that we've been talking about at Queensway, the pupil ratio is approximately half that, slightly above, but about half that ratio. So when you consider the financial viability of the school and the economy of scale that doesn't exist, it isn't sustainable to maintain that quality going forward, and we would have to work with the school to make very significant further cuts, which would have then a consequent impact on quality, which would then put what is now good rating within Ofsted at a significant risk, which would probably bring us back to the same conversation in the future, and there aren't the children in the locality to create a school with the economy of scale that we're talking about, which would mean that potentially further down the line, we might be revisiting this very same conversation, only with a much bigger liability to crystallise for the council as a material risk. So I think it's just really important to sort of set that out in terms of the reason why that quality has happened, isn't just because of the effort and the support and the quality, it's also as a result of a financial investment that isn't sustainable. The other point I'd say, because I didn't repeat it earlier, was about the viability of other schools in the area, which would obviously be materially impacted in a positive way by the children that would be placed in their schools as a result of a potential closure. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Councillor Lamb?
Thank you. It feels like we're coming to the end and the vote on the item, and it feels like minds are made up on this one. As I said at the start, and just to make clear, I can't support recommendation B to publish a statutory notice. It seems to me that's the direction that you're looking to go. What I would implore on you is to consider, at least in parallel, an additional option, that when this comes back to exec board in June, it comes alongside an alternative full options appraisal around looking at resource provision and other alternatives for the site, so that at least there is the opportunity for the school, the community, and for us as exec board to consider if there are other alternatives. I'm convinced there could be, but that would be my plea, at least if you're going to publish the statutory notice, let's make sure we have all of the options on the table when it comes back in June.
Thank you, councillor Lamb. I'm just going to ask Dan to very quickly just remind exec board about what options, clearly we're talking about the consultation on the current Queensway school, but what the timetable is for looking at options around the site. We're all aware that sites used for education have specific restrictions on, so I'll just ask Dan very quickly at this point to update us on that, please.
In terms of the future use of the school, if it were to cease being a mainstream school, we would be seeking to find an option which would continue some kind of education presence in the building, probably in relation to SEND, but we've had an exploration around whether or not we could run a consultation in relation to that concurrently with this, and we've been advised that that would be a related proposal and therefore a challenge to this consultation. That doesn't mean that we can't in the background start to think about what those options might be in the future, but we can't conflate them with the conversation that's been put forward today.
Thank you for that clarification. So councillor Hayden, do you have anything to add at this stage?
Just to say thank you to all involved. I did read every one of the full report and every one of the submissions. It is, you know, upsetting, it's emotional, and it's not something we'd want to do. I worked in schools for, you know, 16, 17 years, I don't want to see them close. It's not what anybody wants, but it's necessary for the reasons set out, and I will give this assurance that every family, every child will be, will have the support wrapped around them to make sure that this transition is as easy and as smooth as possible. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 204. Councillor Lamb, just want to, for clarity, just repeat what you said during the course of discussion, please, so we've got it recorded correctly.
Well, I'm proposing that we consider an additional, I guess it would be recommendation E, to request that a full alternative options appraisal be presented to executive board in June 2025 to include options to open a new resource provision or send school on site. I plead that isn't a consultation, it's not a parallel effort, it's just having the opportunity for us to consider the options, and I'd be looking for someone to second that.
Thank you. I think officers have been very clear about why that's a reasonable suggestion, it's not one we can do. not one we can do at the moment, so.
I think, I think, can we get some legal advice? Because I'm not sure that's what Dan said.
No, I believe, I believe in terms of what Dan said, in terms of not being able to conflate that is correct. What you can do though is to add that as an amendment and, and take that in June separately as a, as a different way forward, which, which, which is possible to be voted on.
Thank you. So with the solicitor's advice, we'll add what councillor Lamb has said, just, we'll, we'll check the wording on that just to make sure, but certainly, certainly we can't have a, as has been advised, we can't have a concurrent consultation, but certainly it's been very clear from what councillor Hayden and officers said, where very quickly options will be looked at, so we'll bring that forward.
There would need to be, as councillor Lamb alluded to, there does need to be a second if you're going to, going to do that or if, if exec board wishes to vote on that.
Thank you. Normally just add, when we've amended, when we've amended them, we've often just taken it through, the process we've taken it through, but I think, we're not actually taking what Alan councillor Lamb said because obviously it was deemed not acceptable, but we will, understanding the concerns and things have been said, we will take the sentiment forward as well.
Sorry, Chair, I just think it's really important. I will revise my wording to make it relevant to what Catherine said. So I'm requesting as a separate item, a full alternative options appraisal is presented to executive board at the meeting in June 2025, including options for new resource provision or SEND school on site.
I think we're going back to, I think we're going back to where we started councillor Lamb, that we, that this paper is on the consultation on the existing Queensway school. What I'm trying to do, I'm trying to be really helpful here. I'm trying to be really helpful here and note in the recommendations of what we've talked, what officers have talked about councillor Hayden, yourself, around what the future uses will come back very quickly and happy to have that in the minutes and, and, and as part of the recommendations. But I think what you've asked for, we've been advised we can't do. Catherine, please.
What I, what I'm trying to say is that, is that if councillor Lamb can put forward that recommendation and the executive board, if there is a second, but only if there is a second, can vote on that, it's up to executive board whether they wish to take that forward as a formal recommendation or, or to take it forward as you've alluded to, leader, in relation to just noting it in the minutes.
I don't see a second, but what I do recognise is, like I say, the sentiment has been come from around the table, which we will reflect and like I say, bring back to executive board, councillor Lamb. Okay, so we've moved on from councillor Lamb's proposed amendment. Is everybody happy with the exec board report? I know councillor Lamb has already indicated, already indicated his position on that. That's great, I take it everybody else is happy with that. Thank you. And at that.
Sorry, Chair, can I just clarify councillor Lamb's votes on A to D then? If that's okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm happy to note the outcome of the proposal on item A. I vote against the approval of the statutory notice. Happy to note the intention for a further report to come and happy to note that the officer responsible is the deputy director.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. That's great, I take it everybody else is happy with those recommendations. That's great. So the paper, it's agreed and at that point I will close the meeting. Thank you, everybody.